All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 4:58. And it looks like the accounts payable manifest is first on the list.
Do you want to do, you have David Katz at 5 o'clock?
Oh, okay.
All right, I'm flexible, so if you have some business...
If you want, come up and have a seat.
Okay.
Thank you for inviting me here.
So Mr. Katz is on the board of trustees of the State Village, and this is our first, hopefully quarterly meetings to talk about communications, kind of hit highlights of what's happening, and that's pretty much it.
Welcome, Mr. Katz. It's good to see you and meet you.
You know, it's good to be here, and I want to thank you guys for having me coming up with this.
Sorry.
That's all right. My dog was here. She can run it out.
That might not be the best time. Go continue, please. I'm sorry.
But anyway, again, thank you. Thank you for having me. I think it was a great idea to do this, to give you the historic commission and got business taken care of there. And I just want to assure everybody that, by the way, I was just elected chair of the board on Saturday. So on my watch, you know, this relationship is absolutely essential for the well-being of the town and the well-being of the village.
Yeah.
We get that. I get that.
Congratulations.
Yes.
You know, it's like, are you sure you can?
Yeah.
You can tend to say congratulations and condolences.
Well, that too, and if the challenges at the village weren't as big as they are, I probably would have not done that. This is a big deal going forward. But what I want to start out with is some of the big picture stuff, and just to make it clear to you guys what my objectives are from the village during my tenure, three years, maybe it'd be further out than that. But one day I sat down and I asked myself, you know, every organization, every business has to be in business to do something. Well, what's the product that we have? All right, and the product that we have is we're selling memories to people. And what we want to do is to make sure that the visitor experience is first class. Okay? To do that, we have to keep our buildings in good shape. We have to understand our artifacts. We're going through what we call a great sorting out right now. And most of all, probably the biggest challenge that we have is the storage for our artifacts. We're bursting into scenes all over the place. You know, we just finished the Brethren Shop roof, you know, which Brethren Shop housed a significant number of artifacts. And, you know, the problems that we have, and I'll share you, I'll share some of the pictures that I got here and give you an idea of the challenges. And this is really just in one situation what we're having to deal with. Okay? And this is the roof boards, the main structure, and you can just pass that around and see. See what's what.
Is this a new picture, or is this from that excellent engineering study that you had?
Nope, nope, nope. That's brand new. That was from the contractor.
Wow.
So, you know, if you're all familiar with construction, we call those latent defects or unforcing site conditions.
Yeah.
And this is just the first deep bump that we're gonna be running into. So we wound up having to do temporary fixes. We called DHR. They gave us a quick email to do that, and we went ahead and did temporary fixes. The problem is, is that we cannot remove those underlying reports because they're historic in nature. And by the secretary's standards, they have to be preserved for study. So I'm not gonna bore you with all the details, but that just gives you an idea of, you know, the kinds of things that we're all gonna, we're gonna run into this all over the place. So I came up with these five pillars. Now, the first one is protecting the artifacts, improving the buildings, building and developing our staff. Right now, we've got a very stable staff. All right, we have three key leaders. We have our curator of collections, our facilities manager, and our education programs manager.
Could you just say their names so that...
Their names? Shirley Wada is the curator of collections. Todd Muffletto, the facilities manager. And Kyle Sandler is the program and education manager. Absent the executive director, these three people have been really holding the village together. All right, and we're in the heat of the executive director selection. And I was told that we might have somebody on board by the end of August. And when I was told that, I walked up, I circled the date, and I said, "That's what you told me." And I think that they've lit a fire under their search to get people there. All right, so we're good. Most of all, I want to make sure that our visitor experience is enhanced. And I think Beth, right?
Yes, I'm Beth.
You've heard me refer to a private foundation. We're working on a planning grant for a seven-figure...
Yes.
Grant, all right? The planning grant was funded by that foundation. That's due sometime this year. They'll make the award, and we're looking at low seven figures to come back to us. And the trust of this particular organization is more religious in interpretation. So we've identified conservation efforts in the meeting house, the ministry shop, and the first two floors of the Brethren, or the dwelling house. And the way we're going to work through that from an exhibit standpoint, we're not gonna be displaying artifacts where people can walk in and nod their head and say, "Oh, yeah, that looks nice." Our curator of collections has decided to take a different approach and try to make the exhibits interactive and immersive as if you were a shaker of living spirit at that time. Okay? She says it's gonna be expensive, and I said, "Shirley, this is a moonshot. We're gonna get one big bite at the apple. We're gonna be successful at it, so keep the vision alive. Keep it going."
What's the name of the organization again?
I can't. I don't, no, I can't divulge that.
Okay.
That's under the agreement.
Got it.
That's why we call it a private foundation.
Okay.
All right, and most of all, what we need to do as a village and with a community is to support our comprehensive campaign. Comprehensive campaign is designed to support both the annual fund and any kind of capital expense. And I believe I left one of these. You, you've got one, all right? And so I'm gonna hold on to mine. So, you know, this is the beginning of a very long road to...
And what does one need to do to get one of those publications?
Probably just ask.
Okay. I will call ahead.
Here.
No, that one's yours. I'll find one myself. Thank you.
I have the one at the office.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll arrange to have another one sent over. Okay? So those are the five pillars that I'm setting up as the vision for my tenure as the chair of the executive board. Again, it's a lot to handle, entirely resource constrained, and we're gonna do our best. When that one grant comes through, I would say that we'll be able to have two or three endowed positions. And one of the key positions that I really wanna get people started thinking about is the curator of buildings. So we'll have a curator of the collection and then a curator of the buildings. If you're familiar with Jim Garten, all right? Jim has been, he's been associated with the village. She was a state architectural historian. If anything you wanna know about any of the buildings or whatever, they always rely on Jim, and he's been our direct contact with DHR. So to be realistic, this is a replacement plan for Mr. Garten as well. So, you know, I'd be very happy to find somebody who's interested in architectural history in their low, early to mid-career, who would wanna step into a role like that. Thank you, because, you know, I've only been associated with the village now two and a half years. I got recruited, believe it or not. And two and a half years later, I end up as the chair of the board. I'm saying, hmm, what did I do wrong? All kidding aside.
And you're there for three years? You'll be there for, at least, in that position?
Oh, for me? Yeah, it's a three-year role. Yeah, it's a three-year role. So specific things, you know, we've got a lot of issues to deal with. Sewers that are breaking down, fire protection systems that are non-functional. I, you know, we've got to kind of pick our battles with that kind of stuff and see where it gets us. I know you were at the HDC. We've got 24 historic buildings. We had to figure out, well, what do we go after first? And what we did there was, is we outlined our elite eight buildings. And these are the ones that most needed to repair. And that's gonna amount to the meeting house, dwelling house. Let's see if I can remember these. Meeting house, dwelling house, east house, infirmary, laundry, spin shops, north shop, and the Brethren shop. Is that eight? I think so.
Rachel, is that eight?
Right. Those are our elite eight. And the way things are going to look in 2024 and 2025, we have to be able to stitch together our grant writing, our capital campaign, and the needs of the buildings. Now, with the meeting house and the Brethren shop and the first two floors of the dwelling house wrapped under that foundation grant, what I've done is I've told people, we're focusing on one thing. We're gonna do it well, and that's gonna be the meeting house. So we're in the process of preparing what's called an alteration request, which we call a soup to nuts. This is from foundation to roof. An alteration request for the meeting house is gonna go to DHR. That'll probably go in probably sometime later in summer, early fall, because there's just so much that has to happen. I've also been in touch with a architectural historical consultant, and I'm working with Preservation Alliance to do an historic building assessment on both the meeting house, which I'd like to do this year, and then the horse park. Get them started on those building assessments. Because with those assessments, it's much easier to get grants and understand, you know, what we have to do. 2024 is going to be a year of getting all prerequisites done. You know, when we have the right process, we go to the HDC. I just assume have the HDC involved somewhere along the line with that. I'm sure if we talk to Kevin, you know, Kevin will work with us. Because I don't wanna have to go linear on this process if I don't have to. I'd like to do things concurrently if we can. I'll attend whatever meetings we need to attend. I'll come visit with you guys anytime you need. So that's pretty much what I see happening in 2024, 2025. On the media side, you know, we're always going to have things that come up. But right now, we're just trying to coalesce around opening day, which is May 11. I wanna make sure that you guys can support that by telling people the best way to do that is through a membership with the village. We have all different levels of memberships. And frankly, if anybody gets, I think, a little bit, it's get over 1,000, you're an automatic shaker supporter.
Member for life? Member for life?
All right, not quite.
Okay.
Not quite. Almost, but not quite. Just depends on how long you intend to live. All right, I do wanna change the village topic over to life or death. I'm sure I was gonna get some questions about that. We had a meeting with DES and Conover today, and there were really three potential outcomes. First outcome was DES smiles and says, "You're not the owner of the dam." DES frowns and says, "You are the owner of the dam." And the middle consequence is nothing different happens. And that's where we are. We understand where DES is. They understand where we are. All right? And the one good thing about meeting with the three people that we met with there, who's the chief dam engineer, I think Jim Weber, who you know, Steve Gion, who's the dam safety engineer, is that they wanna just get the situation resolved. They... They don't wanna pursue a path where dollars are spent needlessly on things. They wanna be sure that the communities are involved and whatever. As far as dam ownership goes, we say we don't own it. They say we do, and then there's a possibility that nobody owns it. But one thing that we did agree on, and I'm gonna ask you guys to do, and I think I got the sense that the town was willing to facilitate community meetings and other things like that. And collectively between us and DES, we feel it's time to organize a community meeting. And what I'm gonna ask that you do is to help organize that. And also, the important thing, I think, is to notify a lot of these butters by mail, because many of them are out of state. As far as the dates and the location, I think it's probably not, this room not could be big enough, I agree. Okay? So I guess I'll work with you to try and figure out the logistics on something like that. Can I count on the town to facilitate that type of, an informational community meeting?
Assuming there's agreement?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, you can.
I would, I would think that that would be the best all to do that.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll go back to the team and just say, yay, girly.
And is there any doubt about the butters? Or do we have a comprehensive list, or how do we actually decide who are? Okay.
Right, you know, I think for us, it was an easy request because you have all the addresses and phone numbers for everybody we know. All we know is the tax maps. The tax maps are not correct because one of them shows Pearson, where they own any of the property. And they actually own some property because I think it was trans, you know, it sold after the tax map was removed.
Yeah.
Anyway, questions. I'm open to questions right now.
What kind of timeframe do you see this meeting happening in?
As soon as practical. All right, you know, in my world, days keep peeling off the calendar, and, you know, the velocity of bad news is 10 times the velocity of good news. And, you know, the sooner, the sooner we, the village, DES, and the town collectively demonstrate that there's things that are happening, be they just in an informational meeting, all right? I think the population will at least get a better feel of what's going on and say, "Well, it's just not falling through the cracks or being ignored," or just the canvas not being kicked down the road harder than it was before.
Yeah.
All right, that's okay.
So whatever calendar, you've got a better grip on it? And do we need to do anything more formal than just us look at each other and say, "Yeah, we wanna do this," or do we need to say yes, or what? That's enough?
No.
Right, and I would consider this a public information meeting, requirement posting, and everything else. You know, the 24-hour goes like you normally do.
Yeah.
Does anyone else at the village need to be? I mean, we can do DES and butters, but who?
When I get the information, I'll make it clear to the board and all the employees of what's all that.
Sure.
Question?
I think that was it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Hey, it's always my pleasure, all right? Now you guys get to the boring stuff, the select board meetings.
It's never boring, really.
I don't know. I said, you know, I may have mentioned I'm on the town planning board. I chair capital improvements in New Hampshire. Chair the heritage commission.
Yeah.
Trustee of the trust fund, so I wear a lot of hats. I get it.
I've met Chief Kathy from the...
Absolutely. Chief Kathy is a find for us. He, he has brought so much common sense to the fire department. And he's got so much credibility that the select board agreed to put an on-lapsing warrant article for a fire truck. He's also got them to establish a fund for the fire truck, so.
Good man.
He's a great man. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. There's Kevin.
Hello. Nice to see you.
What are you doing?
How you doing? I don't know. I'll let you know, June.
You know, I'm great. Good. No, really, okay?
All right, I'll see you later. Thanks.
Scott, what time is it? Scott already said his booting is at 7:30.
Accounts payable manifest in the amount of $438,612.62. Let's cut this.
That is school district, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. But I wanna make the 62 cents.
That's gonna be a long hunt.
There it is.
The 53 is the amount?
Yes.
All right, next is the bill manifested in the amount of $53,280.63.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's that one.
This is just...
Do we weigh on this one? This is the highway funds.
No, why don't we just go ahead with that?
Do you know which one that, you know?
All right, Ken, if you wanna explain this next one?
The next item is the vote to reaffirm acceptance of highway block grant. Back in December of '23, you opened a public hearing to accept additional funds from the highway block grant. It was pointed out from the minutes from our auditor that that public hearing was never closed and voted on. So I talked to town council and the auditors. They felt that no problem, other than all you have to do is vote on it tonight to reaffirm that you do accept the money.
Okay. You all have that money. All right, so I move to ratify the acts of the select board on December 18, 2023, to accept and expend the unanticipated funds in the amount of $26,743.62 from the state of New Hampshire in addition to the regular highway block grant as part of House Bill 2, and the amount of $13,597.32 from the state of New Hampshire for a one-time payment for bridges as part of House Bill 2.
And then seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I think that takes care of it. Nothing to sign.
Nothing to sign, just... All right.
Next is the minutes. Okay. All right, the minutes. So why don't we start with the minutes from April the 15, the public portion of the meeting? So moved. Beth, you got a chance?
Yes, I looked at everything. I sent any change. I only have one change. Was it on this one, Cap? And I thought you were going to keep a list of that, so I didn't bring it, but I can look really fast.
Nope, I got it.
Please.
Oh, you said that on line 291, Mr. Weber does not agree that... 291.
No, this was, this was just, this is probably a point of our...
Because the minutes reflect what was actually said and done at the time, and if you all agree that that is what the person said, then...
Okay.
That's what the minutes will record.
Then that's fine.
Or reflect. And then I don't see anything else that's an actual change in what she said.
Okay.
Wait, line 154. You wanted to describe where we were. Oh, who, who the alternates planning board would like to appoint.
Oh, this is the only planning board. Planning board would like to, oh, I see.
I could change if you'd be the planning board.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay. One thing does need to be changed, though, and that's line 61. I put a placeholder for the personnel analysis reports. That should be 318. So just when you make a motion, if you can make a motion, minutes as a minimum.
Okay.
So I can say that way.
Ken, you good with minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. We accept the April 15 minutes as a minute.
I'll move seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, how about the public minutes from April the 16? That was the work session.
That was, and I had a couple of questions, but no changes.
I'll second Kent's motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the executive session, also April 16.
I'll move the minutes.
And these are the ones that we just got when we...
That is correct.
Yeah. And this is correct, line 37. New Hampshire is technically an "at-will" state?
Yeah.
Not home. That's what we're not. We are. Okay, and that's fine.
Ken, did you make a motion or...
I did.
I thought so. I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and you need to, before they go astray?
Yes. And it will find this time, so that's good.
There we go.
That's here.
Come on up, folks.
No.
I think we could grab an extra chair, maybe, and...
Yeah, sorry about that. It's not about the PB.
Okay.
That's my kitchen timer. Sorry.
That is in the new business folder or old business? Wait, I didn't say it to you to look over today. Oh, it's right here? Okay.
So you've looked it over already?
Yeah. We prepared a purchase and sales with no amount in there.
I was gonna ask you about that. All right, so you were considering, I think, Kent, did you make a suggestion?
I think I suggested 29.
Yeah. Are you sure you're gonna consider that?
We did consider it. I spoke to Ken the other day. We've done a lot of work with our deed abstractor, and he literally is back to 1893. There are two segments of this. There's a back section and a front section. 0.6 acres altogether. It's basically an acre or so in the back and 0.6 or so in the front. And he literally cannot find who owns the front lot. So basically what that comes down to is that you're gonna have to go to all of the other deeds to all the surrounding properties, research those, and try to find something in there that gets us there. Ultimately, we go, we do the quiet, total division, which you have a lot of research that goes into that, what we got here. In regards to the number side of things, we wanted to at least approach that number or talk about that number a little bit. Again, I brought the report with me from the deed abstractor, and it's, you know, it's gonna take a lot of work to get there. We think we can get there. There's still a little bit of gamble there. But I just wanted to know if the town had any flexibility. You know, originally, we offered the $24,000... You know, originally we offered the twenty-four thousand with a lot of research, what they have to do behind the scenes with the title, et cetera, to get it clear. We wanted to kind of revisit that.
Okay. Ken, tell me what you're thinking.
I guess if we want to dick or we can dick or I'm. I guess I'm of the opinion we've set out what our numbers are, and I know they're probably not exactly what you want, but I think I'll stick with what I suggested, and seven-two can outvote me.
What do you think?
I don't quite literally, to be honest, know how to think about it. It almost feels like I'm saying a random number, though I know the number you proposed, I know what we countered, and the work that you put into the project. I don't really know how to put that in context and say, is that fair? Is that not? I think the better question for me would be what would happen to that property otherwise? Is it a piece of property that we would want to, you know, is it valuable other than having the customers own it? I think in the scheme of things, the difference between twenty-nine and twenty-five? Twenty-four is not that great for the amount of work, but again, I have a hard time thinking about the context of it. So I'm happy to listen a little bit more to how people feel about it.
Okay.
I'm not weighted to twenty-nine or twenty-four.
One of the things I'd like to say if it's okay.
Of course.
I think, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, unless I believe it's been off the tax books since two thousand two.
Two thousand and two is when the town.
So it's been twenty-two years it's been off the tax books. The town, you know, has lost tax revenue from that one. Obviously, we're gonna get it back on the tax records and whatever.
Yeah.
But again, we wanted to, you know, at least try to get close to that twenty-four number, so what they hold us.
Out of curiosity, what are taxes on a piece of property like that? I don't want to think about it.
Well, right now.
That's not critical if you don't have the number.
Right now, it's valued at thirty-nine thousand dollars. So I have to look and see.
That's okay. That's not, that's not a big deciding factor for me, enough to know that for twenty-two years.
If we do the rate per thousand, how close that would get you, but whatever that rate per thousand is.
Yeah.
Twenty-five or whatever would happen this week.
Scott, what do you think?
I think, you know, I agree with Ken that it's probably not worth dickering over. You know, we're not talking a lot of money in the scheme of things. I could certainly, you know, talk about a lower number. It does sound like they're gonna do a fair amount of work to get some kind of ownership of the property, so.
I think that's a, that's a good argument, that it hasn't had any taxes to the town. And you obviously want it badly enough to put this work into it. To me, that's a, to me, that's a good argument.
I mean, if we're already filled with five hundred dollars, excuse me, I'm sure you have, you know, twenty-two years. It's a lot of money that adds up at the end of the day, but it's not generating by not being on the tax books.
Can you just refresh mine for just a half second? What's the size of the piece of property?
One point six. I have the abstract report if you guys want to see it. I'm happy to have it via.
I think that getting that report basically said, oh, this is gonna be closer to the higher numbers they gave us to put into this with the lawyer and the abstractor, you know, not a lot more. And going forward, that makes it easier for people to get a loan on, because you can't go to the bank right now, get a loan on a house from a, right, my mom from a.
Does not equate title. The abstract is after all the work behind the scenes to get it equated title, is what it comes down to, so. I was amazed that they come back to eighteen ninety-three. I was reading some of the overage in there. It was pretty easy to.
It's above a thousand bucks a year.
Yeah.
But we're losing taxes.
So I'm okay with twenty-four, is your offer?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it as well.
And I will be okay with it as well.
Okay.
So do we need a motion or?
Yes, we need a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we accept their offer of twenty-four thousand.
Seconded. Yeah, Ken seconded, I, aye.
All right, we're all aye.
We aye.
What would you folks like for opposing timeframe, thirty, forty-five days? What's good for you guys?
So thirty days is fine. Yeah. And we'll draw up the deed and get that taken care of.
And the only other question I have for the board, if you can, is okay if we do a yes in the meantime on the property?
We'll sign the purchase and sales tonight, and once that's signed, then I don't see any issue with that.
All right, so Ken, it's okay to fill in the twenty-four thousand?
And then there's signature sections.
Yeah.
And do you need a deposit tonight?
Pardon me?
Do you need a deposit tonight?
Put it back.
I know where you live.
I know we've been. With the block grant, we've been accepting money, you might.
Yeah. Except a little more.
There's also a place for markets as well.
I've got it.
I've got it, yeah, we've all got it. We always bring extras. It seems like they disappear.
You want to get us a copy of this or?
Do I have your email? I do, don't I? Is that ever from?
Yeah.
Yep, I'll scan it and send it.
Yeah, if there's additional information you need to put on air, you can.
Okay, not there. Yeah, I should have left. Should have.
What's thirty days from today?
Should be June sixth, maybe? Right. Ken, are you doing your calculations?
Best.
Yes.
Jim that, Jim that.
Which is a Wednesday.
Thank you very much. I do write on my book. Oh, yeah. If you don't mind, that would be great. If you want a nicer surface.
Yeah, it's hard to hit a mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And I'll email it to you, and the original will probably put in the property file.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for not stealing my pen. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for, I just noticed we have the whole action item printed out. Thank you, Kathy.
All right, Ken, what are you thinking next?
Uh, new business?
Yeah.
Start with the tree.
Yeah, I see Kevin sitting there, so I assume that's why you're here, Kevin?
Yes.
You have the aspont.
I'm not sure.
How does one say that anyway? Aspont.
Like speaking on behalf of the tree or?
If you so desire.
Well, there's been no formal H D C gathering or discussion about it, obviously. Ken notified me to check out the rip and take a look. When I look at it, it's hard to determine, especially with the maples, having gone through this with the shaker maples, without having a true test done as to, because you can have a lot of rot, as long as you have enough of living tissue. And it can be a layer. It's amazing how much that tree can survive. That said, it's in a pretty precarious position, and I was talking to Ken. Ken, not only, I'm assuming that you didn't sell things for the line, but for the cemetery itself.
And we did get an opinion from the subterranean trustees, too.
Yeah.
They felt that it would cause quite a bit of damage if it did come down, so they were concerned.
Yeah, and the likelihood, I mean, given that the large rot assesses on the north side, so if predominantly, most of your damage comes out of the freak storms that blow out of the south, and that's what happens up in the village. You're more likely than not to have northwest winds ninety percent of the time, and that's gonna push it into the cemetery. So from that standpoint, I think the town is got a pretty good reason to look at taking them up on that offer. Again, you know, somebody could argue with me and say, well, we should really do some testing to find out. That would be a professional way to do it, but.
Out of curiosity, what does testing a tree to see how valid it is cost or take? How long?
Depends that. Up at the village, I know they vary so much. But if you do a full-blown core testing, it could be a couple thousand dollars.
Really?
But, well, I should say that was for six trees. You're probably looking at five to a thousand. And then there are lesser ones that basically knock, they go around, knock it in, depending if you cut them or if you're for it. But, you know, given their age, the other one's not in as bad shape.
The one next to it? I was surprised that that one hadn't been flagged too.
Partly because that one has had less work done to it that has distressed the tree.
Because the one that they flagged is like cutting ten.
Yeah, because it's closer to the lines. Over the years, it's done way more to it, and, you know, for the road salt, a bunch of other reasons too, but. So I, you know, I guess, again, I can't speak on behalf of the H D C. Well, I'm trying to save every tree, mature tree as we can right now, because there are so few in the pipeline. Got a good job lately, but there's something in between, so the minute we take that, something like that, it's a changed landscape. But it's maybe the opportunity for the town to take advantage of somebody else's pay for it, for one. And, you know, it may be the neighborly thing to say, you know, how about another tree? Let's defly it to center of town in a safe spot. But I think that would be a fair thing to ask. I'm not sure about.
Does.
Every source of the program.
Aslud do that kind of thing? Is that who you would ask for another tree?
Well. Yes, you can sell it yourselves. And particularly, we have a history already of trying to do the work with Gordon Star and whatnot. I think that would be appropriate. Say no. Yeah, without spending more money to really say no, there's no good reason to. I think there's two good reasons to give them just kind of.
And when they take it down, what does that actually mean? Do they take it down, stump it too?
Well, and that's the other thing, is they should stump, because that spruce tree stump is gonna still be there fifty years from now. They should do the whole thing. Right? A little gray.
And they do that kind of thing?
I don't know.
Nope. Might be good to know before.
Well, certainly, that would be a conversation.
That would be a big conversation, find out when you say take it down, what do you mean?
Again, it's a visible tree and a visible location and a historic location, so this is not just your average wood century.
No.
They should be sensitive to that.
Yeah.
So how do we go from here? Do we go, do we, who do we, who needs, who's on first after this conversation?
I. My thought would be that the selectmen have the final authority to do it, I think, with the input from the H D C. If you wanted to wait, tell the H D C at a real meeting. Then that might be the way to go, and then you guys make the final decision.
Can the H D C, would the H D C be able to find out from U N I T L what their plans would be for if they actually take it down?
I have the contact information from Aslud called my office, so I can get ahold of them, and I can check. That's easy enough for me to do.
That would be good to have during that meeting, because that may be the condition of something.
Seems like we should know that upfront.
Yeah.
What they plan to do.
Agreed.
So we don't, the current H D C regs are very vague. Kind of a general landscape. Most towns have it more specific than we chose not in this last round of upgrading. Rates not going good.
More specific in regards to even things like trees?
Particularly mature trees in a historic district, yeah. Having a process of how you determine what a tree doesn't need H D C approval, because it literally is a safety issue versus one that someone just wants to take down, and then it would be a process for that.
And then that's gonna show up on your agenda in a meeting coming up.
They talked about for a while.
Okay.
Barely significant trees, shaker trees, some of that.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so I'll get this information passing on to you.
Okay. You need on whatever two states you have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Tangential note, anywhere on the dam.
Other than, were you here for Mr. Katz's? So, so yes, the select board is gonna be facilitating a public meeting soon with all interested parties, probably in the Old Town Hall here.
Yeah, I know I've talked to Mr. Pan, Mr. Parnar, and been curious as to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whether that was gonna happen.
Yeah. I'll reach out, because I was supposed to go yesterday, actually, and look at the dam and farm duty. Procluded my going, but I'd like to set something up and just go along.
It would be worth it, because.
Agreed.
It's a quality to see it, or to see and understand that, you know.
Fire chief put up yesterday and what that from a mercy standpoint, mercy management standpoint, so.
Yeah, the flow stopped.
Yeah.
That's good.
It is good.
Every time it rains, I get a little nervous.
So when that happens, Kevin, everybody involved, butters will notice, everybody will be publicly noticed as well.
Great. Before we lose Kevin, I've got nothing on my list to do. I'm not sure what it is, and that's go with Kevin Bragg when he talks to Shaker Village. Not sure what that's about.
Let me go back and look at the context. It might have been about. This was added on four one. So the minutes from April first. I think this was under committee appointments.
About getting a B O S rep to?
Yes, and we obviously got the rep, because David Katz showed up today, so that we can count as done.
Good help fish and chew.
We can go to bed early tonight.
My work is done.
So if you hear of any more dam walks, would you like to be invited to stuff too?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I have not been able to get free, but maybe next week. But Mike Parnar is more than happy almost any time. Sitting there forever, understands the topography, which is very important, so that leg is a main factor.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for doing. It's good to see you, gotcha.
Next is the letter.
Yes. Do we have a copy of?
Each one of you got a copy of that?
One do. It's the yellow envelopes, so stop, I was in wars and took the scan from that, but presumably offering to have a say.
Kent won for...
Yep. Oh, they did all the copies? Great. Yeah, well...
So, have you seen the electronic versions of it? Yes. So, I guess the high point is that Sheldon's asking for reimbursement for legal fees and has made several, made right-to-no requests with quite a bit of information. If we're handling the right-to-no request, I sent a contact in town council today, referenced the reimbursement and they suggested that the town go ahead and do that. That would be the most financially agreeable way to do this.
Right.
And I'll forward the letter, the email from the town council to you guys.
Okay. So the demand letter references, was it seven hundred dollars?
Seven hundred dollars, yeah.
Any discussion on that?
Do you need to read it? Do you want to read it, Ken?
Yeah.
Is that, are all parts of that right-to-no request, do they fit in the scale, the scope of everything we learned at the seminar the other day about valid right-to-no requests?
Well, there's some things that are asked for that are accepted from it. So he asks for communications between the board, town council, and Ken and town council, but he does acknowledge within that there may be an exception. So basically, we're just going to say, "You are correct, there is an exception, can't give you any of that information."
Okay. Good.
That seminar was helpful for understanding the documentation that we should go through and all that. We sent the response letter today.
Do you have any other questions you want me to ask? I'm going to the seminar again tomorrow, so...
And our responses, our initial responses that we received the right-to-no request, Ken will process it and then we're a part of the office and it could take several weeks for us to finish putting it all together. And there are charges for physical copies. So if they need, if they need physical copies, there are charges for that. Electronic copies, no charge.
Right, and so long as they have the, your response to the request within five days, it's legit?
So, you, Mr. Wee?
No, he's not here. He's not here.
He's presumably, right?
Yeah, he's from New York, I see.
This was the document that went to somebody's house and then came back.
Correct.
It's going to come out of town funds, right? It's not going to be something that comes out of CBA because they don't have any budget.
They do, but not something that covered us since it's just come on the facilities expenses, or attorneys fees or something.
Do we need to make a motion to pay that or do we just...
Probably would be good, yeah, make a motion to pay the reimbursement of attorney's fees.
I guess I'm ready.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we reimburse the seven hundred dollars as demanded for attorney fees.
I'll accept that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We get to keep this?
Yes.
Yes, this is a best of you, each of us?
I have a scant copy, so...
Looks like six o'clock at this here.
Come on down. And our extra chair disappeared. Just some more paperwork.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we get started, just, we have a deadline tonight, so we're allowing fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
Total, total twenty minutes, fifteen for a presentation and five for questions.
Can I have your name?
Mark Aubrey. A U B R V Y. Here we go, Steve.
All right, thank you.
No, no problem.
Sorry, you know what, our chair has to be a little...
Another meeting later.
We need to later on.
I don't think this will take long. I just, you all know I'm doing a project here in town that may be using these recycled materials. What I gave you is just a packet that I got from Mark. Basically, it's a little bit of history. The first one's a little bit of history of ESMI, how long it's been there, how it's been constructed, how they do their operation. The second one is the materials that they do treat, the materials, I shouldn't say that they don't treat. They, you're going to have to help me out, Mark, but they're predetermined before they come to his facility. There's only certain things that this facility will treat and it's basically petroleum.
So we're picturing a, an old gas station, something like that.
Oil tanks, house, yeah.
Very old home tanks. Still, you know, accidents where diesel fuel still are active.
And this page here just shows what the state has set for their minimums for that certain type of element, if you want to say that they have to pass.
Basically, all the material I have to treat it. We're basically burning the material. We hollowize all the hydrocarbons out of it and then unnatural pollution control equipment to destroy the hydrocarbons prior to going up into the air.
Thank you.
So basically, it creates an inerture. All the organics are all burnt out of it. It's not incinerated, but it's, it gets up above the boiling point, so all the hydrocarbons are evaporating. And then we take samples every hour off the conveyor and make a composite sample for a thousand-ton batch. So there's thirty to thirty-five samples in that batch. Then we then mix up, take it to an independent lab and they run it for analysis for all the oil and hydrocarbons that we would be bringing in. So we just make sure everything's getting out of there. And basically, the standards that the state requires us to meet is the most strict residential standards. But then they limit that we can't put it out to commercial, it has to go out for commercial or industrial or throw their work or something. So we still can't use it for residential, even though they require us to meet the residential standards.
The last one is areas engineering, because they have monitoring wells.
Yep, I see, yep.
And every two years, Mark?
Twice a year.
Twice a year?
Yeah, basically from the time the facility was put in, we have five perimeter wells that we sample twice a year. It's a release detection to see if anything's getting out from the material we're bringing in or, you know, if we're contaminating the water.
From radiating it and stuff like that or...
Well, none of the material, everything that comes in is dumped directly into a storage building, so it's never exposed to the elements until it's treated. So it's all stored within a ten-thousand-ton storage building. So the contaminated material dumped right out of the truck right into the building, so it's never exposed to the rain, so... But rainwater on the site is all directed via stormwater pension bond that has an oil water separator in case anything, you know, residuals from the trucks or whatever that, people that was leaking out of the truck engines or whatever that might have happened. So that's controlled. But we, that's why we're testing the water all around. So they can catch it early if there is something that's out.
Down in behind that tractor place up there, aren't you?
Yes.
You got tours out there or...
Yes.
Did you say tours?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds like it's right up your alley, doesn't it? Don't you like to see everything?
I do. I wouldn't mind doing it.
It's, you would think the dirt is long, black.
Basically, it comes on dark.
Right.
It's the carbon black.
Right.
So we're breaking down the hydrocarbons, so it's basically carbon black, it's like, so it's, it looks black. Looks like a topsoil. The hydrocarbons are broken down. So I'm sure you've got a number of emails and letters of concern from people up there. What can you tell me about testing for PFAS, PFOs and heavy metals? We don't bring anything. We're not allowed to accept anything. Okay, so do you test prior to the load being accepted? The consultants onsite that characterize the material, we don't do any of the testing before we bring it. It's consultant, private consultants that do all the onsite site investigation and provide the... So they're going to the site where the material's coming from? Yeah. They're doing their testing, they're doing the site characterization. Do they work for you or for somewhere else? They work for whoever the generator is. Oh, they pay for it? I understand, okay. Yeah, so, you know, if we're doing ExxonMobil, ExxonMobil hires a consultant, they go onsite, they do all the sampling, testing based on what are the site history might be. They would do tests to make sure they follow whatever they're... So is it routine to test though for the presence of heavy metals at start there? If, yeah, if the site history shows that. So if it's a used oil that might have been into an engine or something, that might have had metal filings or something, they will, they will test for that. PFAS? Not unless it's some indication. So no routine test? Yeah, we're basically, state's targeting fire stations, airports, any place that has... That had foam. They found, yeah, it's home. And we basically, as a corporate, we, anything that's tied to that, we're requiring it to test or we just say, "We're not going to..." Okay, so the testing for the presence in those that potentially... If the site history shows that it would be there. Yeah, so that would go same answer for PFOs then as well? Yeah, yeah, they're usually tested. Yeah, yeah. We are working and we're working on a research and development project because we feel our technology will treat them both. We're not taking them, but we're working on a separate, we have a portable plant that's actually going to be mobilizing onto some large federal projects that should demonstrate that we could be able to treat it. Yeah. But it's this point that's... The state's not going to, well, initially the state was telling us, well, calling us blind, they can treat it. And we're like, we're not allowed to. So then we started going back and forth, but then it was just, the way the regulations are written right now, there's just no avenue for us to take if you do demonstration testing. Yeah, I understand. So, yeah, they're kind of going, or onsite, where the material stays there and what they can do. Yeah.
So you rely on, you accept that nothing that you get is going to come out of your test work at the end of the process? You assume that you don't have any PFAS, so you don't test it or it's going out?
Yeah, whatever is tested coming in is what we're testing for going out. The state, as part of our groundwater sampling, the state is now requiring us to test two wells, three wells.
Okay. So not the soil itself, but the test wells off?
Yeah, our groundwater, upper wells, yeah. That's part of our groundwater permit. Anybody that has a monitoring permit is now, the state's requiring us to test for it. That's how they're getting all their water data. Questions from anybody else? I think there's a lot of material here to look over and go through, so I'd certainly like to do that. In some places, like Loudoun Country Club, I got off course, has over four hundred thousand tons of material under there that people are planning on, that's just a refused to shape the whole course. Gotcha.
Really?
Yeah.
Loudoun? Wow. Okay.
That was one of the first places we put material, first open.
It's right across the street, isn't it? It's not the one that's going?
Yeah, yeah.
And they actually, the original owner had, he was originally doing twenty-seven holes. He built the initial eighteen holes and stopped because he either ran out of money or whatever. Sold off the other eight holes, so the developer one built houses now because it's on there. And we said, "You can't build houses because it's restricted." Yeah. So they went to the state because we meet the residential standards, so then he tried to sue the state. The state told them, "Okay, as long as you put it on the deed, that is, that was treated material on the site and it gets carried with the deed going forward, they could build." So now they built million-dollar houses up there, but sitting on our territory. So what's the attraction for somebody to use that material? Is it the cost? It's a recycled material. Yeah. But is it, I assume it's cheap? Yeah, we don't need the value.
Free?
Yeah.
It's free and delivery's free.
Well, but that's something that I could never quite understand. You're doing, obviously, testing, you're doing monitoring, you're doing processing.
Same reason you're questioning it. There's no, people don't see the value in it because there's a stigma attached to it. Like recycling glass, recycling plastic, recycling paper, it's not as good as the original products as we want.
Correct, but how, I guess I'm curious how the ESMI is making a living from this? But from the companies that you're taking it from, but not the...
On the intake.
On the intake, not the, yeah, oh, interesting.
And that's, most of, we do a lot of utility companies, the big ExxonMobil, all the gas companies because our process removes the liability, their future liability. The contamination's gone. If they throw it in a landfill, years down the road, they get, they get the big pockets. There's a leak from the landfill, they're going to go after the utilities or the large petroleum company. So they like bringing it to us for that. The fact that we, we get others to get there. Yeah. And a lot of, a lot of the utility sites, if they're redoing a substation or whatever, it may not even be contaminated, but they have to move dirt off their site and they're saying, "We want you to take it and burn it so that nobody can ever say that we put contaminated material somewhere else." Understood. So a lot of the stuff we take isn't really even maybe contaminated at all because they just want to get rid of it. Yeah. Is Loudoun using it in their roads? They've been, over the last couple of years, they've used some of the stone out of the material and ground it into some of their roads and then paved over it. So the stuff that wasn't, was more sandy underneath the pavement, they kind of ground it all in. Grabbed maybe four to six inches of stone, grounded in, rolled it out and paved over it again. Yeah. Wait, am I correct? In the application, we're talking about here, if this material would be used as a layer and then something else over, right? What do you put over it?
It would be a bank run, crush run gravel, yes.
Does that in effect seal it?
The state, I was going to say years, not years ago, had basically said that gravel is not impervious, it's non-impervious surface. That's what they've said. There's this stuff up there that's called nit pack. I think you've seen it, it's gray silver, that's even, almost like cement now.
And what would go under the material? In other words, would you need to have a bottom layer, then the fill material, then a layer on top of that?
No, no, you would just take out any lome that's in, just like you're building a road. You would go out and pull out the roots, take the lome down to a certain depth and then you would bring this material back in.
Compact it?
Compact it and, you know, you would still... Compacted, and, you know, you would still see the sides.
Yeah.
And lome would see the side so that you got roads so that you're not, you know, losing it, you know, the rain doesn't take it away.
But does it have to be sealed on the side? Does this require, like, you just said the ledge pack isn't impervious to water and stuff, does it need to be to make, to meet the safety standard?
The state, the last thing I gave you was a letter from the state, basically saying this can go here. You're just gonna stay certain distances away from water and wells, and it can't be used in playgrounds, it can't be used in, um, an aquifer. Fill like that, and you can't fill wetlands with it. That's basically it.
Correct.
They say it's, it's no different, there are rules and regulations, it's no different than a septic design. Septic designs are a little mini hazardous waste sites. They got nitrate going out. And we have setbacks from those. Your well has to be certain feet away, you have to be a certain feet away from the wetlands, and depending upon the wetlands, you have to maintain a certain distance from those also.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of the same as septic system. Their, their rule for this soil is a hundred feet from a wetland where, uh, that's surface. Yes, the surface water.
Yeah.
Um, where a leach field is seventy-five feet.
Yeah.
That's a D E S rule.
All right. Were written into the state regulations, we're considered certified waste derived products, as long as we meet our criteria, so.
Questions from any other board members?
I think we can be reassured all we want, it's gonna be whatever happens when the dirt hits the road up there.
Years ago, when you were building the public station, you know, some complex up there, as we were talking, I forget who it was, but I was going back and forth. Well, using it up there, I want to say the engineers structurally wasn't comfortable with it.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I don't know, any other?
Why structurally does it pack like, doesn't pack like dirt, doesn't work like dirt?
Well, we don't need certain si- analysis, because it's all buried, we might have a lot of silvers and plays and stuff that's not designed like if you're an engineer. Designed so much, has that so much impermeability or poor material, so it doesn't.
But that's different for roads as opposed to?
Well, it's underneath, you're gonna be putting the more structural stuff on top.
Yeah.
Yes. But still get rolled and compacted.
Yes.
Yeah. But if you're building a building on it, they just want to make sure it's not made of zinc or.
Oh, it has to be, yeah.
Right, yeah.
All right, well, thank you for this material.
Yeah, this is a lot to digest, but thank you for bringing this all, and I think, uh, Ken, you're probably right, it's not. It's, it's easy enough to look at it on paper, and, and it's, when it gets out in the real world and people have to think about it, then it gets hard.
Yeah.
And it's, it's worthwhile going up, I did go, I don't want to take any more time, but, um, this material that they do process, it just sits outside, and it's raining on it, and all the wells, they're not showing.
Yeah.
So.
And that's the end.
If I did want to take a tour, do I call you? Your name is right there, I've got it marked with the star. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, folks. Good night. You gonna stay?
She loved it.
Sounds good. Yes, you do, I agree with that. All right, so are we at gazebo repair estimate?
Yep, we've got one more estimate, um.
Do you want me to read those aloud?
Well, we haven't got a scope of work yet, so.
Okay.
I think just, I just want to let you know we did get one.
Okay.
If we're gonna do a bid process, so to speak, then I think it's reasonable not to make that public yet.
Understood.
I mean, the work is there.
Yeah.
You can read the, the scope of work that they offer, but probably not the.
Understood.
So what I've got is the scope of work from Dale. I actually had a pair of scope.
So can we use?
You can use, compare those as far as the scope of work, if it meets the scope of work, and then we had another proposal, I don't know that I'd call it an estimate. Um, last year before town meeting, is where we came up with a, uh, potential cost.
So.
So I, I guess what I would, what I would ask is that, um, if we have a scope, then I would probably send the scope of work to this company. As well as the previous bidder, and ask them if it's there. If their work is gonna meet the scope of work.
Yeah, can you look this over?
I did.
Looks good to you?
Yeah.
I actually had him over there to measure the thing.
Yeah. Anything further on gazebo repairs? Do you want to, you want to look at that while we're?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Next is a letter regarding the highway department?
Yeah, that was just a letter from Resin, I have that.
Do you want to read that aloud or?
Where, wait, before, where do you want this, uh, scope to go?
If you want me to take that, yeah.
I'll put that.
You said you looked that one over. Oh, sorry. I thought you said you saw that one.
Yeah.
Actually, we'll pass that down.
All right, so, uh, this is a letter dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, it is addressed to the members of the select board and the town administrator. I'm writing to you because I recently learned that my neighbor Evan Hupman resigned from the Canterbury Highway Department. I do not know the details that led to Evan's decision, I do know that he is a young man of exceptional integrity and heavy equipment skills. As you know, he remains a lieutenant on our town fire department and is an active volunteer with our rescue squad. Clearly, he has invested a great deal of time and energy in meeting the needs of our Canterbury community. If Evan's resignation had anything to do with the way our highway department is run. I respectfully request that each of you give careful attention to the ways for improving the department. I know we all regret the loss of Evan from our town's workforce. Thank you for your attention and ongoing public service. Sincerely, Randy Hayes, Two Ten Mall Road, Kettering. Thank you for that.
Well, that was a nice, uh, recommendation on his, on Evan?
Yeah. Hi, do you want to read that letter?
Okay.
Want me?
Yeah.
Uh, can I see the, um, the, uh, scope of work that you had from Dale?
Actually, those two right there.
Let's see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So let's see, only one not reading out loud.
Okay.
I suppose that one until we're all agreed.
Well, that's, that's the one that, that can't just okay.
Correct.
Can we, um?
Back to you.
Oh, I wouldn't know how to, just reading this to know how to compare them.
Well, there is, so that, that is not a comparative, that's just the scope of work that Dale was suggesting.
Oh, just the scope, not a, uh, okay. So I have to say on the record that I really like living in a town where we get handwritten scopes of estimates and works and letters. I think it's great.
Put that back to you.
Okay. Would this, so would something like just go back to Alex Young to bid on this scope?
Yes, what I'll, what I'll do is I'll forward that to the two bidders.
Okay.
And ask them to make sure that they, they, if they need to change their bids, then they can.
Okay.
That's the scope of work.
All right, so Ken, unless I'm mistaken.
Oh, wait, before we move on, excuse me, um, do we need to do anything other than here, the letter that was written? Oh, okay.
No, I did this just for us. So that brings us to special detail policy updates for the police department.
Yeah, we have a special detail policy for the police department, and it's outdated. Um, most, most of it has to do, the biggest update is the, uh, that they listed the cost in here. Um, and this was, uh, June of two thousand and six is what was written in. So we gotta update the, the.
I'm sorry, did you say two thousand and six?
Yeah, so we have to update the amount of money that we charge because we bumped that up a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's a couple of, uh, parts in here, I went over with the chief. Um, one of them is that officers shall not work more than sixteen hours of special detail during a scheduled duty week. He'd like to change that to two details per week. Sometimes the details run over eight hours, but he doesn't feel that, um, two details a week is gonna be a problem with, with that. Even if they're just over eight hours. Um. He'd like to strike, um, no, uh, it says part-time officers may not work more special detail hours than regular duty hours, work for the department in the same pay period. One of the part-time officers they have is only part-time. Um, and with a full staff of police, full-time police officers, they may not need a part-timer to work regular shifts. So they would only be used for details and maybe filling in for a sick day or a vacation.
Oh, so then they would necessarily have more special details.
So they have more special, they, if they work two details per week or three details per week as a, as a part-timer, then, you know, they wouldn't. If they didn't work any details that we, or any regular shifts out week, then that, that would be a problem with this, the way the policies are. Um, and then this has a special section for the speedway, and one of them is no officer, including the chief, shall work more than sixteen hours per day. And no more than sixty hours in any week, including both scheduled duty and special detail time, except in extenuating circumstances which could not have been anticipated. Um, he doesn't feel that that's realistic. He feels that during the race, it, it's, they end up, sometimes they end up working, particularly. Uh, on the, the day of the race, uh, in the evening with the traffic. Um, sometimes it goes till two o'clock or three o'clock in the morning, so.
And that would add up for an officer being there for more than sixteen hours?
Including more than sixteen hours, yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Um, it just, it's the way it works, and so they have, they have, uh, places for them to rest during the day. Um, you know, refreshments, things like that, they have a trailer there, like a, a work trailer set up, so they can go in and relax and get out of the sun or whatever. Um, but he didn't think sixteen hours was, was a reasonable amount of time, given the circumstances out there on, on some nights.
Wow, okay.
Just for those things.
I can't speak to that, but it seems like a lot, but if that's what.
It, it does.
That's what it, it dails, oh my gosh.
It does, but that's, you know, so I'm gonna, I'll, I'll change these updates and send you a draft. And we'll have it for our next meeting when the chief comes in, so he can go over it. And, uh, I'll email it to you guys, so you can see, see it with the changes or the corrections or the proposed changes. So, uh, you can talk to him about that.
Okay.
Send it to us at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so I think that brings us to old business, right? All right, um, you could have come up draft, that you got the emails I sent you.
I did get the, I did get the emails you sent me, I did, um, so let, I'll back up and tell everybody why I had you send me emails. Uh, so when we were at, uh, whichever meeting where we got, um, the paper copy, um, I had gotten a copy, I think, from, emailed from Ken. And then at that meeting, you handed, handed us a paper copy that.
Correct.
That you had edited.
Correct.
So this is the one that I wrote all over when I was, uh, thinking about how to craft this. And then I said, this is silly, I'm not gonna retype everything, so I asked you for your version, but for whatever reason, the version you sent me does not match this. So I did, so I wasn't quite sure how to deal with that, if they're not major changes, but at that, by the time I got yours, I wasn't able to. See how that differed from this.
Gotcha.
But that's not actually the, the major point that I have with this, so as I, since the time that, um, you presented this and I was thinking about it. Um, I've gone to not only a write-to-know seminar, but the, um, local official seminar and a couple of other things on the. Uh, New Hampshire Municipal Association from their offerings. I also went and Googled, um, code of conducts in small towns, uh, code of conducts in New Hampshire. Uh, just to look around and get more of a context of how these things are used and how other towns use them. And it, it seems like for many, uh, towns, the code of conduct is, is kind of. Comes within a, a, a general ethics document, which is how you, you know, and that part of it is more, um. I want to say less touchy-feely and more legal. It's like you start with the ethics and you say, you know, these are things that your board, any board member, just can't do. You can't like have insider information and make it, you can't profit, you can't, you know, all those things. And that seems to be all upfront, and that seems to be pretty much across the board for everybody. Um, several of the things I read said, it should, you should really have one for, you should have one document. Not necessarily one for select board and one for everybody else, because, one, that makes it hard to keep track of, and two, it just. A lot of the things are standard about either ethics or behavior that everybody should. Um, some things are particular, like how, like the chain of command perhaps, of who, if somebody comes to you with an issue and you want to report it. How you do that might differ from board to board, but that, that's more a process for that board, not part of the code of conduct. So I think what I'd like to do is, is I need more time, one, to see differences. Two, to get a more of a sense of how it can be useful to us, and three, see if, um, what sort of processes should be included. Um, as far as, okay, if somebody, if, if you're on board and you have an issue, what do you do with that? Because part of that is how you conduct yourself, and part of it is the ethics. And I think you can do it simply, but I think it just needs, I need to think about that a little bit more, how to, how to construct something that's simple.
Mm-hmm.
And is some, is useful. A lot of this is, is good. Um, but I'm not sure it's in a form that it's useful, um, compared to everything else that I've looked at. So, um, wait a minute, and this is, um, the other thing was, is I was looking over, uh, Ken, the thing that, I think you threw this out today from the audit.
Noticed that.
Yeah, from Plotsnik and Sanderson that says, has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for your members to follow? And, you know, we have said no, but it really seems to be recommended that we have one. Um, and I think that that's how this could be.
Yeah.
Part, part process, you know, it's, it's like legal process, and then in the process of doing all this, this is how you act.
Yep, and I would say that if the, if neither of those codes work for you, I'm, I'm not married to them, I have no particular. It was just, um, something that we found, so.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's, I looked at like, you know, the problem is, is that a lot of the codes are from much bigger towns. So they're obviously a lot more comprehensive.
Yeah.
And they're, they were hard to kind of whittle down.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that was it, so, um, yeah, they usually have something like a, a conduct per se as part of the. It's dealt with a little bit in the preamble, and then it's dealt with more as a sub-section after you do all the legal stuff that you have to do. You still have to be nice about it, so, um. Wait, I'm gonna also check my notes because I was doing this all, I forgot anything. Um, oh, uh, a couple of times, places I ran across, and I'm not sure this is a bad idea. Is that once this document in whatever form is simple and usable, that it really should be something that's presented to anybody who wants to join. Either a volunteer board or a run through a select board, so.
Yeah.
They want, they come into the town office, they want to sign up, I want to run, okay, fine, read this first. Not sign it, not read, not behold, but you should know that this is what we expect, and then there was a lot of towns that did that. Um.
Great idea.
Great idea.
The, yeah, go to all boards. I mean, pretty much the same thing, we go to all boards. And the other thing that came to my attention while I was looking was they were talking about boards doing due diligence to figure out how to actually conduct themselves, what they're responsible for, what they need to know legally, so we don't end up with more seven hundred dollar legal fees. And one, a couple of places have suggested that instead of trying to somehow encourage, enforce, coerce, whatever, your board members to go to a training, is to have your town hold their own. Have an all-board meeting, have it on the night where most people might be able to come. Have town council, your own town council or somebody from New Hampshire Municipal, pay them to run your own training. That way you're here with everybody, everybody's, everybody's on the same page, everybody can ask their questions specific to your town and be answered. And since it's probably with your council, it's a, it's a private meeting for all the boards, so you can really ask in questions without upsetting anyone, or, but, but getting a, getting an answer in a, in a thoughtful way. In a, in a private way, confidential way, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So I thought that was something that we should consider. And when I did the math, I figured if we did like a three-hour session, say our council charges three hundred bucks an hour, if you divided it up considering that New Hampshire Municipal Association charges like seventy bucks a seminar, that would be twelve trainings. And we have a lot more than twelve people on our boards. So it might be worth it to, to see if we could set that up and do it and just say, look, all boards, all of us together, same place, same time. Everybody knows everything that Cal has now diligently been going around trying to tell everybody how to do. But, but Cal's one person and I think people might have questions that Cal can't answer and that council could. So I would, I would put that as a kind of a side in addition to doing either an ethics or code of conduct document that we, that we try and, and work with our boards to not just handle a piece of paper and say, here, let's meet and talk together. I think it's money well spent. The town might spend it anyway if they were going to try, but then you'll only get a couple of people who go to the seminars and this seems like it might be a, a better way to get more people and more information.
Yeah, and as we're paying out seven hundred dollars, as Kent said, for one individual.
That could have been, what's the, who does the math, seven hundred divided by seventy, yeah, we could have had another ten trainings. So I think it's important as a part of the code of conduct, I see more being a useful how-to document. Some of it was a little over heavy-handed, some of it was like, but interesting. How to make sure that nobody gets the impression that somebody is looked upon by the board more favorably than somebody else. So say Webb comes in and we all say, hey, Webb, how you doing? But he's with somebody he's representing and we say, oh, well, Mr. Sanderson. As opposed to say, Mr. Stout and Mr. Sanderson, which is very formal. But then nobody feels like, well, you like him because you call him Webb, and you don't really like me because I haven't called you by my name. So there were, there were some things in there that were very interesting and I don't know if we would ever use from a practical standpoint, but was, I think, good to consider. As far as, again, conduct, how you, how do people perceive your board?
Do you wanna revisit this at our next meeting?
Sure, yes, that would be good. I would like to, please. Thank you.
All right, highway staffing.
Who bought?
Just, we're FYI, and we're down to one person in our highway department right now.
Dear.
For the foreseeable future. We interviewed one candidate last week. We're interviewing another one this week, potential third one, so. We are part of, I talked to Beth today, we are part of a municipal government, public works, municipal, I guess, compact, mutually compact, so to speak. So if we get in a situation where we need assistance from another town, we can ask for that. At this point, I had a conversation with the old agent today. He feels he can handle things as they come up. He's got one or two private contractors that could help out needed on some projects, so. That's kind of where we're at.
I guess that the arboretum and the use, we need to use the funds by.
We're gonna have to dedicate them by the end of this year.
Which means we have to have a signed contract. Something like that.
And then we have to use them by the end of twenty-five. Send the quarterly report to, to the, to the Gopher people and list that, that what we planned on doing. But that's, that's where we're at.
So I've been calling Art once a week. And I will continue to do that to like make something happen.
Yeah, yeah.
What says we applied him when we talked to him?
Oh. He talked to one guy that wasn't gonna do it, he talked to another guy that thought he might do it, and then that fell through, so he backed to somebody else he knows, so. I'm just sort of going around, we took a little ride, he and I, and looked at the damage on the roads. He knows it's neat, it's needed, so.
But the original guy that he said had a raider, it was so great, he was kinda like that.
I don't think that worked.
Oops.
Well, this is how this works.
Any of the trades? This is, this is normal. You know, there's a shortage of skilled tradespeople pretty much across the board, so.
So what happens if in good faith, we dedicate the money, say we're going to spend it and they can't find the people to actually do the work and expend the money?
In order to have it dedicated, we need to sign a contract.
Oh, so then we would have to have.
Yeah, we'd have to have somebody.
Okay. Okay, well, let us beat the bushes. Art's one bush, which is not responding, but you're gonna keep trying.
He's responding, just not as fast as I would have liked.
Are there any alternatives for finding a contractor?
We could call a general contractor, one of the GMI or Anheuser, one of the contractors in the area.
He did contact Ockley, I know that.
Yeah, I would call.
Art contact, contracted, contacted oddly?
Pike or anybody, you could reach out to them. I just, well, I'll send a bid out, I guess, and see if there is, see if anybody's interested.
You think it's worth giving Art a little more time, or?
I'd like to have a little more time with him.
Sounds good to me.
Cause I, I think he could, he could help us in other ways.
And he knows everybody, so.
He does.
Well, it seems like if he, if he works off of that, he knows to see if he has any part-timers who might wanna be in our highway department. You think somebody might have a, I don't know. Seems like everybody's busy like crazy, but maybe somebody isn't that he knows. Well, we hope, somebody must be looking for work, correct?
No, actually.
Ouch.
Seriously, there are very few people looking for work right now.
A few, but not none. We need the, we need the one. Okay, well, that's.
More than one, actually.
Yes, we do. But you've got one, you've got at least two that you're going to be interviewing. That's a start.
Good people, hopefully. All right, next item, twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure what that is.
Is this Sam's?
L zero one. It's?
Is it in?
It's in here, it's over there. It might be in. I might post it.
Is it in the new business folder?
I think that's where it is.
Might be an old, it would be an old business.
It says old business in the.
Or.
Nope, it's neither of those. That's FYI.
All right, so let me look in old then.
It's under the old business section of the agenda. Yeah, it is.
Ah, okay. Oh, I understand, okay.
So that's the, the report stamped into other.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, is there?
Is that the, is that the one that got paid?
Yes, that is correct.
No.
Oh, that's not the one.
There's two on there, and I'm no doubt the one that got paid, cause the one that's unpaid is, is what's left in the package. Okay, so that's.
So we only have one that's unpaid now?
Right.
That is up to DD.
Okay, so, all right.
I believe that's a vacant lot.
So please do explain to the newbie, what does that mean, DD? When you say DD? Takes it?
More or less takes it, yes. We notify the, we notify the owner that the town is taking steps to take the property by paying taxes. They have a certain amount of time to pay that back. If they don't, the town can take it, just like the property that the actors want to buy.
Correct.
The town assumes, the town cannot sell it. The town, we typically do not sell property that we've taken for three years because that is the time by law that the previous owner, or any previous owner can pay the taxes on it and take the property back.
Pay all back taxes?
They pay all back taxes, inherent taxes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're at the town owner for two and a half years. If the previous owner came and paid the back taxes as well as the taxes in that two and a half years, then they can retake ownership.
And this, this other one that you've crossed out, Cal, they actually weren't, we don't need to, they pay? Right.
So what action do we need tonight, then?
We don't need any action, right?
So this is just information?
Sam will come in at the next meeting. And hopefully, these people will pay.
Yeah, understood.
All right.
Seems you're working so far.
Yeah, yeah, with only one left.
Just one.
He's definitely, all right. Oh, that brings us to the action item review.
Again, I have a couple of questions on here. What am I supposed to ask Greg about? I haven't seen a letter that he had sent to the board.
Which other?
That was, I didn't have updates for those. That was because Greg had brought up the road waivers and there was the whole discussion with the language about how the language changed and you were gonna ask at the next board, planning board meeting, what Greg wanted from the select board, cause it was unclear from that discussion. Was that the discussion of up to class by standards versus good and passable, or? Exactly.
So I think, are they meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, well, tomorrow's their special meeting. And then they've got their regular meeting on the fourteenth, thirteenth? Tomorrow is their, the special meeting that they, that they re, they changed the agenda.
Would be the fourteenth.
The fourteenth is the regular one where they're going to do the next two chapters of the master plan plus meeting.
So do we need it before the fourteenth, you want to go tomorrow night's meeting and ask this question?
I'm betting that there won't be room on your agenda to do that. But you're trying. Five-seven meeting or five-fourteen meeting? So the due date I'll put on that is the next select board meeting, which is five-twenty.
Item seventy-nine, I'm over getting quiet.
Yes, so sorry, indeed. Especially with my phone now. Much better, much more better. You mind the alarm for when the timer is finished?
No, I think that's.
No, okay, it's just.
It's just, yeah.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find it.
Thank you. I know it's a small thing, but.
You know, it matters. Did, for item sixty-nine, did we, was Mrs. Miz Stein?
I love her.
Well, she was contacted though, but I have to remember.
She was contacted twice, phone in, email, and I had Robert back.
And she had?
She hasn't sold the fifteenth.
Oh, until the fifteenth.
Did we send those by mail, something?
I could do that, I can send it by mail.
Because is it sixty days from when she has been officially, that we know that she knows she's been contacted? Or sixty days from when you tried to contact her and couldn't reach her? Sixty days from when you made the decision, so from. Oh, okay, from the decision, okay.
I will send, we'll send a certified return.
I would think so, yeah.
And then Ken, item fifty-nine, it looks like Jim Weber is not gonna be able to do the calculations, so.
I'll mark that one's complete.
Yeah, I did get an email from Charlie Crowden, he's on the conservation mission. And I'll contact him to see if he's cool, or if he can do the calculations, or what his, what he could possibly do to help.
I would think that would be helpful to have by whenever we can manage to get the dam meeting.
Excellent.
The wooden structure to hold back water meeting, not the dam. All right, and that too, we heard about Art, things are all set. On past, you said you didn't hear back from them yet. Oh, anniversary committee.
I haven't had a chance to give anything.
I would like to punt one of my things here, and that is to contact the garden club. Is this something you could take over, do you think?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, I might have a, an update on that. Cause I came down to pick sticks with the fifth graders on Friday. And was talking with, by the way, in case anybody wanted to know, there were forty-five kids in the center.
Cool.
Picking up sticks and rocks.
That's great.
Probably fifteen of them were really effective at it. And, but they were all trying really hard and they did a great job. The center is pretty well situated. But when I was talking with Lori, she, we were picking up the debris afterwards. And both she and Donna, I think are willing to be the brain powers of a committee. And as they, as they told in conversation to you, they don't wanna actually have a committee and have to do meetings and things like that. But when we, we talked, I said, look, so what if you had a, a meeting in the spring and a meeting in the fall? Present to the select board, this is what we wanna do all spring, all summer, this is what we wanna do all fall, this is the resources we need. You don't actually have to do that work, but at least it's on our radar, this is what you wanna do. And pretty much what Lori wants to do now is concentrate on the invasives behind the library. And that's really all she wants to do at the moment, so.
Well, they need, they need to be behind the library and then behind the old schoolhouse, cause that's a solid patch of jungle. Down to there, we whacked it twice last year and it's right back up.
Whatever, she, she just said library, I don't know what else that means. But yeah, I'd be willing to work with them. And what I, what I kinda said to both of them is it seems like between the two trees being planted, the sticks being picked up, I'm gonna, I'm going to take care of the trough and the lawn will be mowed, that everything could coast until fall with whatever Lori wants to do as far as invasives. Just let us know what she wants to do about invasives. And then regroup in the fall, when we're done talking about dams and roads and.
So on the same sort of subject, Ken, is the, Aspen gonna clean up those trees they cut down, or what's gonna happen with those? Are we gonna take care of them?
I don't know, I just saw them this morning.
Okay, there's one right behind the town hall and they cut one down beside the school, backside of the schoolhouse.
There was some. There was some, uh, black locusts. Yeah, black locusts, and they were. They contacted me, uh, came in the town office a few weeks ago and asked if they could take them down. I went up and looked down, and they weren't anything that was really worth saving, so.
Yeah.
I know, and I done a walk around the center with Summer Dole a few years ago, and those are two that he identified who should take down.
Yeah.
So they did?
So they did.
Yeah.
But they left sections of, they chipped all the brush, but they left sections of.
Is that good for anything that would burn?
What'd you lose, Wes?
Boom.
Oh. Oh, I'll come get it.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, geez.
Happy ending.
Perfect.
See ya.
See ya.
Well, if it's good for burning, I'll come.
You gotta have a chainsaw.
I'll get a.
And a truck, there we go. I just make sure we, we don't just leave it there.
Yeah.
Alright, John, question for me for Cal actually, on item forty-one, which is the, um, website?
Um, I have had that on my to-do list every morning since, um, April first, and it has not yet happened.
Understood.
So, that and the, the survey, I was supposed to put out that up this month. So, as soon as I find time, it's gonna happen?
Understood.
I've been using our website a lot, and actually on the whole, I'm not, I'm not sure how different it needs to be. As far, I mean, the parts of it need to work better. That's the main, it, look, the overall infrastructure isn't, I mean, not the infrastructure, the overall design isn't that bad. No. And it has a lot of the stuff that we need on it, and it's just, it's got a lot of things that aren't functioning properly and things that need to be reorganized, and just the way that Civic Plus has their website creator setup, we can't reorganize it to be the way we need it to be, so. But something like Firehorses, I mean, they wouldn't, be curious to see, um, if they just took it and it didn't spend a lot of brain power starting from scratch, or just said, if it's pretty much like this, it's good to make it work. Yeah. It don't have to get all fun and fancy. Um, it's not bad, it just needs to work. Yes. That's part of how we're getting a brand new website for under ten K. Oh, good, okay.
Anything else from anybody on?
Uh, yeah, what about number forty-three? Do we have a draft dirt ordinance?
No, I, I thought we.
So, I, I sent you guys an email, I think, uh.
Yeah.
About this as far as what the attorney suggested.
Yes.
The road standards.
But there was no, there was no sample ordinance attached, okay, fine.
Couldn't find an ordinance anywhere else. And again, I talked to NHMA, I talked to, um, our attorney, and they felt that the best approach was those two road standards. I mean, I can, I can draft a policy if you want.
No, no, it's just.
If that's, if that's what you guys want me to do, I can, I can put something together, run it by our attorneys, and see what they say, and then give it to you guys.
So that would become part of the road standard, though, right?
Well, they feel that our, the road, the existing road standards.
Yep.
Because they say it, it tells what the aggregate should be.
Yep.
And the base and all that, that, that is sufficient, and we should use that as, because those are accepted best practices, I guess.
Yep.
Um, whereas this would be a specialty ordinance that uh, only addresses one asset, I guess, of the operation.
So if our standard says it has to be this, that, or the other thing, uh, is there room for, um, substitutions? In that, if, uh, if you appeal to them, or what's the mechanism for having that actually?
Well, I.
So that we know that that standard's being followed?
I, I, I don't know how to answer that.
I'm not even sure I'm asking a proper question, so that's okay. I'm, I'm not quite sure what I'm asking, so.
It, it may be a question for you to bring up, like with the hard road to travel.
Yes.
Some of that you voted.
On Wednes, uh, Thursday, going to hard roads to travel?
That's a great idea.
I've already got two questions from Ken, and I found three more that I wanna ask. Have anything you want me to ask on the Thursday, Ken?
Nah. Well, I think that's the, the big issue, I mean, I was thinking tonight on the way here, other than when we had that, uh, drug repair business going in, uh, over by the, uh, waivers. I certainly can't recall, you know, the volume of concerning emails that we've gotten, so.
How would I best phrase that question, because I, I realize just asking you now, I didn't ask it very clearly. But if I was going to ask them, um, what would the question be? What's the best? Well, you can think about.
How do you regulate the material that goes in rows, I guess, would be a question, I love.
Alright, well, well, I'm sure it's going to come up a lot.
Yeah.
So we'll see how the discussion goes. Very excited about hard roads to travel.
Alright, anything further on the, uh?
Action items? No, this is, this is, other than to say, for me, this has been really helpful. Um, just to try and keep, uh, uh, at least knowing all the moving pieces, even if I don't have much, um, influence on which jobs actually get checked off and stumped. It's really.
Can you give me more, or?
I'll take more, uh, I probably should have more, and I will in a week or so.
Yeah, there you go.
But, um, but, but to me, this is really helpful just to see and keep track of things.
So, as we're looking at this seventy-three, I'm gonna be meeting with the CCPC on Wednesday. So, um.
Right.
I should have a better answer for you one, where they're headed.
Yeah, actually, Howard was at my house over the weekend, so he may, uh, he's talked to you in the last couple of days, he's got some ideas, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we got, I mean, with things that we're talking about, I think the push for this is coming from a lawyer who would like to help the town finance a free money, and she's not feeling welcome, so.
Gotcha.
I think they would have to come from the, the three selectmen, if we, if we wanted to do that.
Not feeling welcome, where, how?
Just, she needs some support if she's gonna keep doing this, she doesn't like chasing money, and then it doesn't happen.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah, 'cause I, I get, you know, she, I think, I don't wanna speak for her, 'cause she's very capable during that, but I think she wants to make sure that if she's procuring grants for a particular thing, that it's something that we want.
Oh, got it, yeah, okay.
That's, that's.
And actually, um, this particular item, uh, just raised a question for me, so do we have any?
Which item?
Uh, I'm looking at seventy-three, where, where Kent is meeting with the CP, CCPC. So, you know, like, all of a sudden, here I am, I'm the, uh, representative to the conservation commission, we have a meeting this week. How do you, do you, do you, does the rest of the board just wanna know if they have something of interest? Should I make a monthly report? Do we have any, do we, do we care? Do we annually say, okay, first of the month, everybody met with their committees, what are they doing? Does the, does, do I need an action item list for the committees I have a rep on, or do you just wanna hear if it's something that's interesting?
That's kinda what I'm thinking.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I think you're going there as kind of our eyes and ears, so. I don't think we have anything.
Make sure they're getting their minutes.
Yeah, well, that, actually, that's a very good point.
Conservation Commission is very good about that. Kelly is all over that.
One of the items I think they'll be discussing is, uh, Brookford Farms, um, has proposed some events at the facility.
Yeah.
And they checked with the Conservation Commission, who directed them to the Forest Society because of the easements.
Right.
And, um, one of the events, Forest Society approved two of the events. One of the events is a circus, some kind of circus.
Hmm.
And the Forest Society felt that that did not meet the, um, I guess, conditions of easements. So, I know that the owner had said that he was gonna call and talk to me about this portion of the property down there that was set aside by the, uh, during the sale that the town could use as recreation area.
Hmm.
Um, and he's wondering if he could use that. But I have, I talked to Ken Stern today, and I ended up sending a bunch of information to the, our attorney for their opinion, because of the way the deeds are written, to see if that is something the town can allow or, or deny. So, based on the conditions of the deed. Um, there's, deed is several, several pages long, full of legalese that if I read it, I don't know, because it says that the owner, the first one says that the owner can use the property as spelled out in the easements. Uh, as long as the town doesn't exercise its option to use that property as recreational. Town has not exercised its option, so I don't know if that means that the town can deny the use of it.
So if we wanna do anything, where is this? Oh, Badis Crossing Road.
Yep.
So anything else the town might wanna do down there, just has to go through wetlands and permits and regular? Oh, they, they included a fact sheet, the effects of beaver activity near dams. In case you wanna know about beaver activity in dams, that's good.
So it's a letter to the town of Canterbury, Office of Selectmen from the Department of Revenue Administration, and it's an official notification of the twenty-twenty-three total equalized valuations. Maybe we need to read it to the record, 'cause just more for informational purposes.
Information.
Alright. For your information. And that's about what we thought, right?
Yeah, what's, what do they say?
Five, five-twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. No surprises, which I think is good, but.
Your third FYI is this big package.
Oh, right.
Okay, yep.
That's informational, the Harney Lane culvert replacement.
Oh, okay. Um, is it? I need to translate this so I actually know what this means, can I get a copy of this? Is that legit for me to have a copy, or?
Mm-hmm. Yep, you can make your copy.
Please. I, I need to, uh, translation.
And, and if you'd like to talk to Mandy about it, she can explain her.
Okay.
Are done with those, those just go back and back.
Should have a different color folder for you, Cal. For you, bright yellow. Something. Ooh, what's this?
Alright, I don't do work.
Set gray, this here, that there.
This will be, these items will be in Mandy's office for the public to, to look at, if they got this question over culvert replacement.
Is this happening then? It looks like it's getting closer. Is Kim still running this thing?
Yes.
Proof that plans found in the culvert.
Rocky Pond, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is a, this is the road that goes around Rocky Pond, and this is how you get onto one oh-six, well, it's right here. So you, you sort of get a running start, you can't see either direction.
This, I drove by there the other, I mean, I've never been down Harney Lane, it looks like a, it looked like a driveway, I was scared to go down. I mean, first of all, I drove by, I went back and forth three times trying to find it. And then when I got there, I went to turn, and there was somebody right on my tail, so I was, oh, I'm not gonna do this, but it almost didn't look like you were supposed to go down there.
Well, you're not supposed to come out of there, is what I think, I mean, you go down there, but getting out of there in the middle of winter is a challenge.
This is your kind of my, I think that's, okay, so, uh, oh, this doesn't help us anything. Okay. But the culvert has nothing to do with.
Well, I asked her if they were gonna try and bring the road up there, and she hoped they might, 'cause that's what it needs, it needs to come up twenty feet or something there.
Yeah, you go, that's what scared me, but, um, if the residents don't care. Uh, please sign this out for you. I don't know.
Thank you.
Drive the road.
Who's that?
So, that's where Sam's. It's a, it's a big mess, but.
Yes.
I mean, really, I didn't wanna drive down there.
Signature.
He's very nice signature.
Yes, he does.
You are, you're allowed to do these things.
I know, but actually, I was going to be killed.
Don't go in on the other end, the guy will yell at you, and you'll feel really bad.
Is there another end?
Yeah. How many lane goes through? It used to go all the way through.
Where does it come out?
It's just missing, it goes, comes out on South Road, I've been done with it. Or I don't know what town.
Oh, okay, I know where it comes out.
Hmm.
Alright. This is nice, man. So all of this, this is just a culvert?
Culvert.
Gosh.
It's a fairly substantial culvert.
I guess so.
That has the, it's the alcohol from Rocky Pond.
Yeah. What's, um, this? Is this just wet, wetlands, or? I don't see, is this stream flows into this, another pond?
No, it's coming out of there in one.
I know it's coming out, but what's it going into? Is this like, should this be?
I think that's all wetlands back in there.
Yeah.
Wetlands, not, not more pond type stuff, whether it probably is a creek, maybe not, wow. Do we need to, um? This is just an FYI. That's just.
Yeah, awareness.
Great map. Mandy's got two more copies, so she might let you take this one home. No, I don't need to, I'm just.
We need to study it though.
I'm just really amazed at the detail for this. Oh, does this have a, yeah, you can see the, that's top of.
Who has to approve state?
Yeah.
Yeah.
More point engineer, do they do dams? Oh, it's. It's hard to tell what, I mean, each, geez goodness. This cat, this covers every, now we've got wetland stream restoration, not to scale, we'll go. This is, this is an amazing bunch of information.
We replaced the block culvert down Ontiville Road, it listed the, that, they had to do a survey of the plants that were there.
Hmm.
And we had to replant the same plants.
Wow.
The same type.
Yeah, yeah, wow.
So, yeah.
I mean, thi, I mean, this is fascinating, I mean, this is, if I didn't know how to build a culvert after looking at this, I could build a culvert.
Oh, look at the time.
And you've got your.
Tim nearly built the north, uh, the runaway pond dam, I think, so maybe we could ask him to go do the, uh, the four hundred floor.
Wow, alright, FYI, I have now all my info, this is great. What's the other part? Oh, that's the, oh my gosh. That's still about this?
That, that goes along with that, that's the specifications.
Yeah, just do that part of it tonight, and just leave the plans here.
Someone will like reading. Alright, Ken wore it at the end, right? Anything?
Wait, sign here, that's just. Okay.
Beth, anything from you?
No, I think, um, I have asked and received many answers today, I am saved it, thank you.
At your level.
I'm not. Seconded.
Almost in favor?
Aye.